Evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, December 12th at 6:30 in the evening. Glad to see everybody here this evening. Let me make a record show that council is all here and they're in a holiday spirit, right?
Yes.
Oh, you can get a hello. I said happy, so. Thank you. In your packet, you have the minutes from November 28th. Are they okay?
One correction under item 19. It was the annual YMCA dinner auction, not Lions.
Should be, what? Not Lions. I heard, I just heard that wrong, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
Is everybody else okay?
On 4-2, well, Jerry Price, the after picture street, third row down, has been at least two years since repaid. The point there was that they repaved the whole street up to a point, then they ran out of money, and it's been over two years since they stopped the repaid. So the balance of the street is really bad, and I've got pictures and everything else. Anyway, so we need to address how we're going to.
How do you want to say, how do you want to say that for the minutes?
I think I just say, leave it the way it is, but I wanted to explain what it really meant.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Everybody else okay?
With those corrections, I move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Right, motion second, you go Karen?
Yes.
All favor say if I've seen eye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Visitor public comment, I'm gonna have Chris Parmenter, if you can, I'm gonna have your comments go when we do the rate discussion, is that okay? All right, are there anybody else that wants to stand up and say anything at this point? I see no rush to the microphone. Okay, we're gonna keep moving forward. Under, I'm starting to read the wrong thing here, under reports and presentations, under my comments, let me, as many of you know, I serve on the board of the League of Oregon Cities, I'm also a board member of the Council of Governments, and I just wanted to give you some perspectives of some things that are going on that will, they could very well have some significant implications to us in the coming months. Just a couple of things, coming up on the ballot on January 23rd is the hospital tax. Legislature, as they prepare for their veterinary short session, a lot of things depend on how that turns out. If the hospital tax is not approved, it, it means that there's a hole in the health program because there's a four-to-one state match. So they would probably want to make that happen, because there are a lot of people who would be uncovered, but then they'd have to find a bunch of, a bunch of dollars. Just knowing that there's a, there's some implications going on there. Letting you know, and Council Day, just letting you know, from a federal level, there are a number of attempts being made to, at a federal level, to preempt local authority on telecommunications. There's a number of things up, and there's some state issues that are looking at, you know, land use restrictions related to 5G. Don't ask me what 5G is, but I know it's important stuff. Another issue that's coming up that League of Oregon Cities is working on for this coming legislative session is right now, when consultants are hired, or they're looking for consultants, you can't ask for price. Price is not allowed to be discussed until after the consultant is selected. It's a state law. League is proposing, and the number of local governments are saying, we need a little bit more flexibility than that, because that makes life really difficult. At a presentation, Amy and I attended with governor's staff, they're going to be dealing with PERS, the governor's going to be submitting legislation in the short session, looking to create an incentive account with the state possibly funding up to 25%, but it would be matching general fund dollars going into site accounts for PERS. The bill hasn't been finished being written, but I'm just letting you know, I've already talked to staff, this is coming up, there'll be a lot of conversation about that. Since we have a hotel going up, transient occupancy taxes, currently Airbnb and others aren't necessarily paying. There is, the way the laws are written right now are a little bit difficult for local governments to get those dollars. The state's looking at coming up with some ways to do that, and interestingly enough, the Restaurant Beverage Association, local governments are, for one of the few times, all on the same page related to this. So I think that's real interesting. And also, in case you are in contact with our federal officials, the salt state and local taxes at the federal level, both, it's gonna be ending up with a tax increase if the current deductibility is removed, for property tax and local taxes being no longer deductible, that will be significant. And so fortunately, both our US senators and Congressman Trader understand our issues, but if you have a chance, it never hurts. Just wanted to keep you aware that they're doing some things in Washington that might not necessarily be. On a positive note, let me just put on your calendar, please, January 31st, which is a Wednesday night, is the annual Council of Governments' annual dinner, it's gonna be over at Grand Ron, they'll host that. It's, I think it's worth going, we can work out some rides together. It should, there are 43 member governments that all work together cooperatively, and we get some of our resources from them, some, sometimes when you don't need a full person, but you need some time, there's a lot of different kinds of things I think that are really helpful. It's a nice evening, and the Grand Ron tribe is hosting this, and they do a very, very nice job. So I just wanted to give you some, just some perspectives on a couple of things, not asking you to do anything at the moment, I just want you to just be aware. Mr. City Manager, from your spot over there, would you like to make a report?
I'd be pleased to make a report, and thank you for that consideration, Mayor, members of council. I know it would get you a little more today, if I stump you a hobbled up there, but I'll stay where I've already banged. So just a few things, and Council Day, you had a question about grant application, I'm gonna defer to Sean to speak to that a little better, he speaks the language better than I do, so I'll defer to that. But one other thing, and Sean's work, we were successful in a pretty amazing effort, an international competition, a fiber challenge, I'm gonna read this, it's an international smart cities project competition. So we'll be pairing up with a European company called Team Dev to deploy a virtual situation room during petticoats. It will be a map of the city with real-time monitoring of traffic, police calls, staff location, video feeds, and anything else we could put a sensor on, like trash cans are full and need to be empty. So think about the utility impact, there's a broad array of information that will be gathered through basically internet of things, technologies, sensors everywhere that serve, that can help us all do our jobs better during this event, and also whether it can get deployed in cities all across the country that do manage these kinds of events, so it's pretty cool. The work came, comes with money to help with deployment of some map with smart city crowd. Fiber is essentially a software platform, and it enables smart applications and devices. So again, this is an international competition, and we were sort of very fortunate, and through the hard work that Sean and our supporters put into this to get that award, and so it's a very big deal in our opinion. So that's ongoing. So you have an item that Sean's also reporting out on, which is the Innen Petterson Park planning, that's coming up, that's in progress, and we'll be underway, and Sean will tell you what's the status of that, what our philosophy is, you know, our philosophy is on that. But the other project that we were seeing Grant looking on, which is the Invis landing riverfront improvements, so again distinguishing those, and I don't, frankly, I don't recall what it's actually, I'm not sure we've ever given it an official name, but anyway, riverfront adjacent to the hotel project. We met today with our, with our development, you know, architectural team, as well as our engineers, and our, of course, director, our developer director. We are at the point, which is called, we're basically at 30% construction, diet, design. It's a time where you've made some pretty hard choices, you have some good numbers, some good options, visa, and you have some calls to make vis a vis our budget versus what we wanna do, versus what we're more likely to be able to do, we'll have a lot more information on it. So we spent a long time doing that, over two hours, just working through that, we have, you know, we've definitely been wanting progress today, and we will be, we'll be recording to you guys as that moves along. At this point, I think because of the timing of the availability of the bulk of our money, which is locked till November of 2018, we do already have a $450,000 award from lottery funds, but we have a bigger award from, a state award, a $1 million award, which comes, is available in November 18. We are sort of hopeful that there was a logical way to split the project, to get started with, use the work in this coming summer, and then continue to really make, finish it up, and tie a whole ribbon around it in the following year. After a fair amount of wringing, you know, wringing our hands, whatever, I think the conclusion is not likely, and it's gonna make more sense just to, if it all is one project, we'll get the best, we should get the most competitive, you know, responses doing that, and so looking at sometime in, you know, November, December, to solicit and receive bids on that project. So that, that'll be, you know, the work, the design work is certainly on the way, 30% at this point, and it gives us a lot of time to, you know, to really improve the intelligence information on that, and also gives us a frankable time to try and generate a little more resource in support of that project, so that we don't have to cut things out, if we can avoid cutting things out, so there are funds to be had in support of that, we certainly will chase those dollars, get the best project possible, when it's all said and done. Similarly, we are getting close to the point in time where we are going to come back to you with bids, not too much further, I think sometime early January, when we come to you with a bid package on the parking lots, lot seven, most of it actually could be able come, but Ellis Lot, the portion covers lot seven. Some work on the old city hall parking lot, just to, just get it with a little asphalt and a little bit of work just to, get it signed as a public parking lot, and a few other pieces, you know, that's enough to do from the previously approved order that you gave us to go after, so. That will come back to you as a bid, you know, bid results, again, I think in early January, so that work will be commissioned for, for sometime in the late spring, early summer, get that work underway. So that project will come as a full pleasure at that point, we spent the bulk of our resource on this, but that was the last phase of that effort. So that's ongoing. Let's see, just change, so questions on the old package, I kinda gave you a lot of information, and I don't know if all the distinctions were clear as to what I was talking about.
Everybody good? Everybody good?
I'm sure it will be come clear as we live through the process.
The point of all this is that you'll see a lot of planning, you'll see a lot of construction, and, you know, it's just, you know, there's gonna be bits and pieces that are still, still ongoing, and we've, you know, we've done most of the public work at this point, but private work is just starting, it's just gonna start getting wind up. On the private side, we expect to get the hotel to get its, do its, start, do work on its foundation work in late February, early March, we expect to see a set of plans, hopefully tomorrow, that's what we've been told, so they had to, you know, tweak it a little bit, but we think tomorrow is when we will see that plan set. They're working closely with our design team on the riverfront improvements, shorefront improvements, to make sure that the two projects melt completely, and we've got a lot of really interesting, you know, tweaks to the project that are really gonna be, you know, nice additions to both projects, so that's, that's happening. So we expect to be able to start, we think we're gonna see some renderings here shortly, and we're all gonna be excited to see what we, we'll share that with you as soon as it's shared with us, so. That's happening. Change-up wine Christmas party on Friday night, it was just a great, great ball-out party, those of you who attended probably know how much fun it was, and I think we, I think we all did well by it, you know, some kiddos that are gonna have a good summer coming up in terms of all the funds that were generated, and so pretty exciting to help, you know, everybody got to be there helping that out. They've, pretty dynamic operation these days, particularly with what's going on in Salem, but, you know, the bonds are getting thrown our way, or not, you know, or pretty nice to it. It's a good effort, had a lot of fun. And music was at a level, but you can still talk, so. We had a meeting with our event series coordinator today, talking about summer stairs, so we're, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna turn over the stimuli on that to Courtney Williams, because that's gonna be pretty much, downtown work is pretty much her main focus, and so Sheen, Sean, and I, and Police Chief, and Kai.
You there?
I missed out.
You missed out, okay, well, you weren't invited. Anyway, we had a meeting, and so, you know, I know my fundamental concern wasn't that I could hear the lyrics from the house, and, and people in Sabbath, people who went out the noise of their neighbors, when it turned out it wasn't their neighbors, it was the park. So we got that message, loud and clear to them, but they're doing a great job, and the numbers just continue to grow, so I think it's just gonna be a great event. So a lot of good things going on with that, and so that's gonna be fun again this summer. Everybody realizes there have been changes in Dallas, they now have, Greg Dallas has turned up over there, our former city manager, has their new name. So Greg is somebody that we know we can have good conversations with, so we'll reach out to them and say, so how can we work together in some deals?
Who was that? Dallas or Paul City?
Dallas. Dallas, Dallas is, they went through a change.
So what is he doing?
He's gonna be their interim city manager, last one that he's noticed, well, he didn't get noticed, which is a fair, it was a couple days ago, a week ago. He's a little surprised, it was a Merry Christmas, that's what happens in the trade, who knows that? Anyway, so there's, you know, it's unfortunate for him, and probably unfortunate for Dallas as they go through their recruiting, but, you know, maybe a little unfortunate term of it, because we know Greg so well, and maybe he's monitoring there to work some things, so we'll pursue that. You have a study session coming up next Tuesday at 6:30, we have this, it's in your packet, if you have more things you'd like us to be passively familiar with when you have those conversations, please get those to us, so we can sort of add it in the basket in the air, one or the other, and we will, it's your time, so we're not gonna necessarily be naming reports, it's sort of on a length, we're not even sure entirely where all the issues are, so this is just a laundry list created, we wanna make sure that we have time to get through, and if we know something, we'll prep it, if we don't, we'll count on you to know what's important, and do our best to respond to what we know, and why we get back to it. Just engage conversation with us downstairs, we may or may not know more than you do, we'll have that conversation.
Housing Coordinator, they've allowed a council of governments, they see four applications for that position, if, just as a reminder, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the Council of Governments, together with Kaiser, City of Salem, Marion County, City Monmouth, and ourselves, and there's some interest coming out of the Aggie County, but I don't believe that's been added yet at this point. So there are interviews scheduled by part of the interview team, that will be Thursday, or Tuesday, December 23rd, whatever that is, I believe, Thursday, and then try to narrow that down, bring somebody on board, and get that person going. At least, our goal, you know, our goal is at least to get a scope of the problem, you know, in Innen Petterson, to the extent that there's a way, so starting to understand how we can focus resources in a helpful sort of way, and that'll be, I think those are our main goals, but if we get more than that, that's great, of course, to see what we can have out of this person, does it cost us a function?
What position was that for again?
Housing Coordinator, homeless housing coordinator.
And this is, will be a city employee?
No, this is the Council of Governments.
Council of Governments, thank you.
We're just contracted, it's shared the cost of that employee, but that person will work directly for the Council of Governments. Our, our share was $5,000, as was one of us, and I think Kaiser's as well, and I think the City of Salem, and San Diego County picked up the money as share.
$45,000 piece.
Okay, there's the numbers. So on my last item is, we'll do an update on franchises, I think you have more conversation coming up next Tuesday, but we are making what appears to be progress with both charter and wave to get franchise agreements. Charters has long, long expired, and so they're trying to get into agreement, we're still at odds over a pretty major provision, they're trying to force us to accept a line we're not interested in, you know, so we'll just, we don't think that they have the strength to make that deal, we're far less concerned about charge presence than most counties are, so they don't really have much leverage on that, but they're working on it. So, you know, we keep us lying the same way, that, you know, this is, in my opinion, a deal killer, we'll come to you at some point, and see if you, if you agree, if we get to impasse, but I think what they're asking for is a bit of a deal killer.
I have a question on that. You would, I would expect you to have the same contract for, for all of them, given if they have the same services.
Yeah.
Would that meet our goal?
They're not identical contracts, law does require basically equal treatment for all franchisees, so, you know, so essentially, whatever we get, get from them, we would, you know, comparable contract over to my end, or maybe do it the other way around, and my end give them a comparable contract with what we have with them, so, you know, it's been a little bit tactical as to which we try to get done first, but it's also a little bit of, you know, if that's the issue, it's gonna, you know, get, get in there, get something done. But either way, everybody's operating off extensions, Sprint's another one that's outstanding, but that one's a little less of interest to us, we can, we'll work that deal.
If I recall correctly, this is not an unusual situation with Oregon municipalities and all the target folks.
I don't know that anybody has a current agreement.
Thank you, I just wanted to put that in context.
Yeah, no, no, this is just what happens with these franchise agreements, everybody is.
Yes.
It's in their interest to have an agreement, particularly since we've bumped into our telecommunications ordinance, now they're gonna wanna, okay, soften the impact of that ordinance on them, because that's what they have to operate under, so that was the whole point of the document, is to say, you might wanna get inspired in getting an agreement, because otherwise, just follow the rules that we have, which are a little more one-sided.
And could I ask at this point, that even though there's not an existing franchise in place, is everybody paying the same rates now?
Uh, everyone's paying the rates that they agreed to in their original franchise agreement, so whatever those are, I don't, if they're operating without a franchise, they have the minimums that are under the ordinance, so I think the answer to that question is yes, but I don't know that for a fact. And they have, light to light, because different telecoms, neither telecom is treated the same as every other telecom, there's C-lax and I-lax, I don't know what those differences are, but they have different rules.
Because we've just recently, as a council instituted a 7% data franchise fee, is everybody paying that now?
To our knowledge, if they, to our knowledge, the answer is yes, some of them don't have their bills due as yet, I think as you were told, that some of those payments are annual payments.
Right.
You know, they're not all, I mean, mine is clearly the largest, you know, the provider in the game, and so they're, they pay monthly, others, they pay quarterly, so others, depending on their size, you know, sometimes it's not all beneficial for them to, you know, pay that off, because writing a check may be equivalent of what they're writing a check for.
A month ago or so, I think we, Gloria said everybody was current on their bill for this, was it?
Yes, and they still are.
And they still are, so, so that is response, your detailed response to your question. And then finally, there's wave, wave has caused us a big deal of confusion, they came to us looking to get a franchise agreement, we worked with them fairly extensively, it was quite a bit of a challenge, the negotiating team for both sides are attorney, their attorneys don't communicate real well, and wave changes its position pretty frequently, to the extent that at one point in time, they had told us they don't need a franchise, because they're not gonna be providing direct service anywhere in the city, that they're just gonna go through it by way of line, and release lines from there. Said, fine, you don't need a, you don't need a franchise, so we'll drop the conversations. And then we got a correspondent, someone goes, oh, where's the franchise? And just scratched our heads and said, well, okay, let's go back and visit these, where it is, so we're back in, we're back out and running, trying to get together with them. I think we have the essential terms, so we should, that might be the first against closure, if everybody gets over their hurt feelings.
Okay.
That's what I've done today.
Mr. Irvine.
Good evening. Evening, Mayor Powell, I'm gonna start first, I'm gonna start first with the broadband question that came up as far as what's going on with the grant that was referenced, previously as far as work with the county.
For rural.
For rural, rural service, yeah, so, as you know, we were working pretty extensively with Falls Creek Innovation, engaging with agricultural technologies, through that, I've been having conversations with at least one of the county commissioners about both the opportunities of ag tech innovation and possibilities of creating additional broadband service out in unincorporated Polk County, because obviously that would facilitate agricultural technologies. He's been very interested in the possibilities of, you know, somehow, you know, creating additional broadband service out there outside of city limits, but of course, there's a lot of questions, and who does what, what is there. The state, Business Oregon, just recently did a request for information, which is kind of a precursor to a request for proposals for a grant program that would, is basically a pilot program to fund planning and infrastructure projects to serve rural broadband, to provide broadband to rural areas. So because that came out, I approached this county commissioner, Commissioner Hope, and said, hey, here's an opportunity to do these ability study, you know, we can bring in a consultant, say, you know, let's figure out where all the existing fiber is, who's willing to lease, who's not willing to lease, do use preliminary engineering to identify, you know, where we can run a fiber loop, is it, you know, and run some numbers as far as what would it cost to serve every single person in unincorporated Polk County with a direct fiber connection, what are the other sort of, sort of possibilities on that realm as far as, you know, pure wireless, or some variant in between, literally run some numbers about projected, projected customers, take rates, you know, potential dollar amounts, and then look at who the potential service providers could be, look at who could potentially fund the infrastructure piece, and then who could actually provide the end-user service. Obviously, my end would be a name in that conversation, but this is really kind of intended to be a wide-open look at the full range of possibilities, and then, you know, we'll kind of see what makes sense, and then, basically, you know, kind of talk with the county about where the possible next steps are. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So moving on then to the Riverview Park Plan, this is a process we've talked about a couple times, is to develop a more coherent, a more solid concept plan for Riverview Park, essentially that it would then be something that we could then move towards construction documents, and if we can secure funding, be able to build. You recall in 2015, when we updated the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, we came up with a concept for the park, basically leaving the amphitheater the same, but really kind of focusing on the rivers, the riverfront area where the parking lot is, where the drive, driveline is, where the playground is, that whole area, and how we can rework that to a lot more access to the river, and really make a more engaging, attractive portion of that park. What we really want to do is engage a community process to zero in on that design, I guess the concept of the concept, and we really want to focusing on something that we believe is the direction forward with this. So to that end, we're gonna be kicking this off next year, and next year as in January, and it'll be, we're gonna have the Parks, the Parks Commission is gonna act as an advisory body for this process, there's gonna be two open houses, public open houses, the first one will be in mid-January, and the next, and the other will be in late March, and we'll be publicizing those as much as we can. The idea of being, you know, the word with the advisory committee is sort of the real detailed conversation, but the open house will be opportunities to go to the community, the first one will essentially say, here's everything we've kind of talked about potentially putting in this park, and making sure that we cover with this area, you know, what have we missed, what other things do you think, you know, could be, should be included in this area, just kind of getting that laundry list of possibilities. And then the second open house will be to review essentially two concepts, preliminary concepts, that will incorporate that feedback, hopefully the two fairly, you know, not drastically different, but at least somewhat different, somewhat similar concepts, so that people can say, well, I like that, and I also like this from this other design, use it as a conversation piece, to really zero in on what will ultimately be that final concept. Process will take probably about five months, we're looking to wrap up by the end of May. Any questions?
Yeah. Is this a, is this a project looking for a need?
I, is this a, is this a project looking for a need? Or is it a need looking for, is it a need that needs to be built? It, I'm just, if I, if I turn around and I look down and I, and I think about access to the water, it seems like we're going to have a lot of access to the water with the landing park stuff. And then there's already access to the water down by River Place or wherever that, you see, you see what I'm saying? And we, it, it just, for some reason, it seems like, is there, there must be a master plan that said, we need to have this. And I guess my point is, do we?
So, yeah, I think so the, the 2015 plan, I did sort of lay out, here's what we'd like to do along the riverfront in the next 20 years. And part of that did include, so, you know, you recall that the parking lot down there, um, there's a pretty expansive space of asphalt down there from when that was, a boat, a boat ramp. The boat ramp, if you recall, we did, we had to remove as mitigation for this when the new one went in in 2013. Um, so a lot of that asphalt is both not necessary, but it's also, when you look at it, it's sloping up towards the river. And that actually makes it so you don't even see the river from the amphitheater in the summertime. Um, so that was kind of identified in that 2015 process as, hey, here's a potential opportunity to drop that down, whether you continue to use it as parking, whether you use it as, uh, to, to offer, you know, additional features. Um, you know, it's, it's something that, it, it probably does need to be done. Um, that then also ties in with the patois access that we've talked about. Um, the Independence Landing Park, at this point, does not incorporate the patois access, so what we want to do is make sure that that area at the end of C Street, which we kind of have targeted as this is where the patois access is going to be, we need to make sure it's all kind of, it all ties together well. Because when, you know, when you kind of, you design this, and you design that, and you design this, and you do it all kind of separately, then sometimes it works, but a lot of time you just kind of get chunks. Whereas, you know, if we want to use this process to say, all right, here's what's going on in Independence Landing, here's what's in the amphitheater, here's what, what we want to see with the rest of the, the riverfront, and here's, you know, the concept for how we tie it all together and make it look like one unified park system.
Wouldn't it be fair to say that this is, uh, the money we received from the state worked off the 215, the 2015 plan, and then we're working out, uh, what this process is going to be, working out the details and, uh, taking it from concept to, uh, this here, this there, this there?
Yeah, I think that, and that is the other thing, is obviously, you know, we need, we need a solid concept in hand to then start walking around to, you know, to, we've got a good chunk of money in hand, and we want to, you know, find, you know, find more, basically. So we need that concept to be able to...
I, I understand wanting to go and have somebody else pay for something, but usually we end up paying for something. And do we want to pay? I, I think it's an open question. I think City Council has to address. Do you want to pay? I all of a sudden heard after strategic planning and, and budgeting, that parking was a crisis issue for people. And I'm going, we didn't have it strategic planning, we didn't have it budgeting, but suddenly we had to repave the city hall, we had to repave some area over here, why we're going to repave down by the Oaks? And, and, oh, we're going to tear up the parking lot? That, that is okay parking lot for parking, right? Near where, where all this stuff is going to be happening? So I'm just, do we, isn't there a point where you say, maybe we can't afford to do all this stuff, and especially doing it over again?
Well, I think everything has its lifespan, I guess is the way I would put it.
Everything has its lifespan, yeah.
So, you know, and frankly, that's one of the things that we want to look at, with this process, is that working, you know, do we need to preserve absolutely every parking space that's there? Frankly, it's not configured very well for, as a, I mean, yeah, you can, you can park there, you can use the, it's gonna, you know, it's, is it the most efficient use of space? You know, that's, that's sort of part of the, the issues that we want to look at.
But as soon as you take it out, they're going to turn right around and say, we need more parking. Where can we get parking in? Right? That's going to happen.
Well, I think this will be an interesting conversation for, uh, as the planning process goes.
But my, but my point is, we're going in with the idea that we already need, we already think we need it, rather than thinking, do we need it? Mr. Klein?
So, we have gone through that needs assessment process. We, we knew that with all, firstly, all of our utilities and all of our, our infrastructure. And this is, parks are a huge part of our infrastructure. We just completed the, the overview of parks and trails needs in the city. We had broad citizen engagement in that process, a large percent of the community was involved in this extensive parks planning process. And the key project that came out, the key focus that came out of it was this project. This, the central feature of our community, the central park feature of our community is River View Park. It is, it is, as Sean said, in many ways, a facility that is in dire need of updating and upgrade. And we make operational changes to the park, but it's not reflected in how, how it's laid out. And so this planned process that the council was an independent part of, the community was an independent part of, we all went through for that, we paid for that, and, and now comes this, this, these finite projects. It's the same thing that we do with water, it's the same thing that we do with sewer and transportation, out and on and on. And that's the rational way of planning our infrastructure. Otherwise, it becomes, what you're sort of talking about, very ad hoc. Well, this year we need this, well, maybe not, let's go, let's go jump off and do that. Well, we try not to do that. Now, some needs become a little more obvious, a little more active, because development sort of drives conversations that we didn't otherwise have, because we didn't know that we were going to get started up in the hotel in, in three months. You know, we've kind of hoped for it, but we, now that we know that's coming, there are a lot of impacts, you know, by and large, very positive, but there's also needs to be addressed, and not least of which is, you know, what is going to happen in the neighborhood of the north, River View Park. So it's, it's, to my way of thinking, the most rational way, and try and prove in the state, how you go from, you know, global look down to a finite look at what needs to happen without being add up from meeting to meeting and...
Okay, so I just want, so to summarize what you just said is, Ken, we've already decided, somebody, prior to when I was on the council, decided we were going to do these parks, and so don't bring it up again. This is the way it is, and that's our, our goal is to put in new parking down there.
I'm not sure that's exactly what I said. What I think I said was that, that project stood out as the keystone project of what is, you know, pretty much the number one focus of the Parks Plan Master Plan. And so we, we proceed to take the next steps, we proceed to fund it, we've gone through the contracting process. Stopping midstream is almost, I, I don't quite get that.
Mr. Col, Mr. Irvine, continue. Do you have any other...
I, I did have one comment. I understand Counselor Day's frustration with this. I think we've been faced with more, um, um, need to make immediate decisions about spending because of the projects that have come up through Independence Landing. This has been a project that's had a lot more long, longstanding planning associated with it, and the council still stands at the gate, and if we don't like the amount that's being proposed to be spent, we can stop that. Uh, the other thing is, we are, as I understand, considering Vision 2030, if that's what it's going to be called, which is public input process to look at what the growth of the city will be like in the next, uh, 10 to 12 years. And this is a great opportunity for public comment, and the thing that will drive us forward after, after the completion of Independence Landing.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Spud, I think you get a quick report here.
Good evening.
Good evening. I wanted to, uh, report on, uh, the results of the, uh, refunding, refinancing of the, uh, rest of, we, we had partially refunded, uh, the ICC bonds last year. This is the, um, refunding or refinancing the rest of those, and then also the 2010 MyNet, uh, tax exempt and taxable bonds. So we, uh, the results were even better than when, uh, we started this process a few months ago. Uh, we anticipated about $400,000 savings, uh, spread between all of the issues. We ended up with, uh, for annual savings for the ICC bonds of about $29,000 annually for, and the life of those bonds are now 13 years. And for the MyNet, uh, their, um, their savings was an average of $27,000 for 23 years. Their tax exempt bonds, uh, matured in 2040. The taxable's, uh, uh, matured in 2028, so I averaged the savings all the way out to the 23 years, but, um, it is actually a better, slightly better result than the $27,000 here. So that's very good.
Was our upfront cost?
Our upfront cost, the cost of, um, the refunding was $90,000.
How much?
$90,000, and that is wrapped up into, uh, the, the full refunding.
So we got two-year...
So those, those costs are spread out throughout the, uh, the refunding itself. So that's, uh, the costs, our savings are after those costs.
So those, to be clear, those refinances in the refunding?
Right. And so that total, uh, total savings, you know, we talked a little bit before, so that total savings is like, when you lump it all together, we saved about, you have a number?
Uh, it was 996,000.
Sound good? I want to take a moment and, uh, offer some kudos to Gloria for this, because she saw the opportunity, she jumped on it, and she pushed forward and, uh, and made this happen. It took the whole team to do that, and I just want to, uh, give credit to that. And then when our sister said he saw the quality of the work that was being done, they joined in, uh, because there's mutual benefit to everybody, and I just really want to, publicly commend you for creativity, getting after it, tenacity, all that other good kind of stuff that, uh, that, that saved us a million dollars. Mr. Klein, did you want to add something?
I would just add that what you should've said, not only was the savings to MyNet from its independence fund, but thanks to the, uh, the, 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 I'm getting on board, there's an equal, if not greater, savings on the other side. So, you know, MyNet in general will be benefited by this opportunity.
Everybody wins. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, I think the next one is, uh, is this, uh, Ms. Johnson or Mr. Klein, which, who is going to carry this one?
It's up, it's up to me.
Um, I'm going to let Karen carry this one because she didn't want to work.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, I just, um, would like to say that I'm submitting a proposed change to our public records policy. Um, a few of the changes are significant in that I propose to create different levels of service, and, um, um, it's, this policy came about because of changes in public record law. Um, one of the changes is that, um, a request for a record must be acknowledged within five business days, and the copies must be provided within 10 business days. However, there are exceptions built into the law, so I do get to take a vacation.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
And so while we were rewriting our policy to address those, I wanted to, um, create , um, different levels of, of, of records, um, requests, simply because, um, the large bulk of our requests are what would be the level one. Um, people are, would call and say, hey, can you email me a copy of the signed minutes from last month? Sure, not a problem. I shouldn't have to charge for those. It's just, it would take longer for me to create an invoice and calculate everything and send it off to them than it would be to just send them the information. Um, the other thing is that I am proposing a fee waiver or reduction to the news media for their level one and level two requests. And, uh, creating the new forms and everything that will follow the policy and, uh, prepare us for addressing the, uh, new staples. So if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions?
Sounds like something that should be put in the paper, that the cost of government goes down.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Please, I'm not sure there, this is what I'm supposed to ask, but we'll be trying.
Okay.
Um, staff is proposing a fee waiver or reduction to the news media for level one and level two requests. Of course, why would that be? Why, I mean, there's got to be a logic here for news.
Um, well, for what, generally, uh, the news media, um, a lot of, it's, there's a public, um, interest test, you know, is it in the public interest? And, um, it just, to me, it's in the public interest to be able to provide the information that they need, so that way it doesn't, it isn't a hindrance to them getting information.
And the other question I have, maybe is, um, I'm not sure if it now's time to do it, but it's had to do with page three of the public records request policy.
Okay.
And it would be B on page three?
Uh-huh.
I read it, and I, I was confused.
Okay.
That's not unusual, trust me. I think it might read better, because I think what you mean is, uh, the city will provide, uh, the, the prepared cost estimate to the requester and will request a deposit for estimates over $25. I think what you mean is, um, equal, the deposit will be equal to the estimated cost, not just $25.
No, it's what we're saying, that if the, if it's going to cost more than $25, then we will request a deposit.
But what's your definition of deposit?
Um, the, the total cost of the...
That's what I'm saying. Maybe that needs to be in here, because I read it, and I thought they're going to ask for 10% down, 20% down.
Okay.
Is it, if, this went through our legal people, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. The, the city attorney pre, helped me prepare that, that part, because that's part of the law, the $25 in extending costs and all of that.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying it's not ex...
Kind of is clear, yeah.
I don't think it really is. And then you look back on the fee structure, I think it says the same thing.
I don't have to be one with me.
Anyway, that's, that was my only, I think it makes sense. Is this something that's already in effect in other cities or something similar?
Other cities are taking care of this right now because the state law changes generally first.
Okay.
So before we close the conversation, I just want to take a moment and say, Karen Johnson also is past president of the Oregon Municipal Recorders Association and was asked by the lead Oregon cities and her peer group, and she helped testify at the Oregon Legislature on issues related to public records, uh, because she represented, uh, smaller cities, and because the legislature forgot that, uh, not everybody's a giant state agency. And so she and some of her, uh, colleagues were able to help, uh, this legislature understand of reasonableness, and the joke about vacation was actually not a joke. That's actually, uh, has, has played as an issue before, and so I really want to recognize you, because I know others have commented on your, uh, practical application of getting stuff done. And so I just want you to know that we know that others ask you to help, and you did a good job of that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there additional questions that we need to? If not, this is an action item, please. Eric? Yes, sir?
I, I, just in response to Counselor Day's point, I think it's a good one. Um, I, I think if you go on to read the balance of that B, I think it's fairly clear that the intent wasn't of the deposit in fact does equal the estimate.
Okay.
Because there's a provision there towards the end that says that if it's over, the estimate, if, if the estimate is greater than the actual cost, reflect the difference from the deposit will be made. And on the, the other side, it, you know, it comes, provides consequences for the estimate not to be fully, you know, not fully, you know, for it to go over the cost of the estimate. So I think, you know, if there's probably better language to achieve that, I think it's, we're taking it together and achieving the result of here, which we're trying to get to.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any, is someone would like to help me, to help move this along? I don't think there's any.
I'll, I'll give you a hand.
Thank you, please.
I'm going to adopt resolution number 17-1468, amending city policy number 1.02, access to public records.
I have a motion to second their discussion. Is everybody okay? All right? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to 7.2, adopting an amended fee schedule. As part of this, uh, there is an opportunity for public comment related to the fee schedule, and, uh, I did promise, uh, Chris Parmender the opportunity, and anybody else who wants to make a comment about the fee schedule, am I in the right place, Karen?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, who wants to make a comment, this is your opportunity to do that, and you're welcome to step to the, uh, uh... to step to the podium and share your thoughts with us. Good evening and welcome, City Council.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for what you guys do here. So I was wondering if anybody could answer why our water bills are higher compared to Monmouth or Dallas per se and by how much?
I'm going to let staff, when they, when they give the report, I'm going to let them address that.
Okay.
Because they're in a better position to do that.
Okay. So I went, I talked to the city of Monmouth, talked to the city of Dallas, actually lived in Dallas in 2014, 2015. We moved straight to Independence from there and my water bill went from $65.50 a month to $105.00 a month from city to city. When I came in to ask about it, I was told that the city of Dallas has a higher population so they could charge less and be able to afford their water. Well, now, as of 2016, there is 508 more people in Monmouth than Independence, but we're paying 40% more for our water than in Monmouth. I don't understand that. We pay on average $108.81 a month and that's a $3.12 a unit, which is 100 cubic feet, which is what every other city uses to calculate, it's off by two gallons. So with that, city of Monmouth with an average of six units is $68.66 a month. City of Dallas, six units is $69.20 a month. Monmouth doesn't even charge a storm drain fee or an ERU. I don't even know what an ERU is and we pay $10.81 a month there. So with all of this, the city of Monmouth and the city of Dallas' water bills don't even match our minimum fees without using a drop of water in the city. And you guys want to raise it. We're already paying 40% more than a city that's two miles away with 500 more people. How can they afford at $68.66 a month what we have to pay $108.81 for? It doesn't make any sense to me. It's almost a 40% difference. It's outrageous. Outrageous. You know, I work in town. I make a decent amount of money. I also have a mortgage to pay. I will next year. I'm close to owning a home.
Congratulations.
So, you know, I mean, I love this town, I've been here my entire life, but to me, going outside of this town and seeing how the bills are there and then hearing things when I come back here that are inaccurate, I just, with the population, with the amount of money, if we have that bad of an infrastructure to maintain that it costs 40% more to maintain it, maybe some of our money that we're arguing about tonight should go to that instead of a ground bid. So that's all I have to say and I really hope you guys consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else who wants to speak tonight? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one correction to, to add to the fee schedule. It's, it's just the little stormwater utility.
Right.
And that's not the act of on-site, it just doesn't do that in the fee schedule.
Which, I think you're making a staff report on this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
There are, there are some other fees there that was provided in the staff report that I believe primarily what we are, what my focus is going to be is on the water and wastewater utility rates. Tonight, the utility rates are, the staff recommendation is per the rate study that was performed by Steve Donovan Enterprises to answer the gentleman's comment about comparative rates around in our surrounding communities. There is a rate comparison in that rate study that answers those questions. I believe that rate study is on our website and accessible if it's, if, if anybody's not finding it, please let one of us know here at the city and we'll make sure that it's there and available for viewing. Enter the ERU. An ERU is an equivalent residential unit. It varies between whether we're talking about wastewater or we're talking about stormwater. It's, it's a unit of measure. The, the primary reason for, for the primary need of the rate increases are for our capital projects, primarily in the wastewater system. We just received the DEQ financing for those wastewater improvements, they're way overdue and these rate increases that were done in that rate study were what DEQ needs us to do in order to be able to do those projects and then pay back the loans. Also with both the water and wastewater projects and financing, there is reserve requirements that we have to maintain in both of those funds. That, that's pretty much what I wanted to, to speak of.
I have a couple of questions, just hopefully to enlighten our earlier speaker.
Sure.
Can you, in a few words, tell us why our rates are so much higher than Monmouth or Dallas?
I'm not prepared to speak to that. This rate study did speak to that quite a bit. The, the way we structure our rates is different. Every city is different in the way they structure their rates. Capital needs are different. They, the city of Independence, especially in the wastewater, had severely deferred their capital projects during the recession and put off those needed projects and so now those are coming. We have been the last several years on, after many years in Independence of not increasing rates, we've been trying to do smaller incremental rates increases over time in order to ease that impact. We have come to the point now where we have to do those wastewater projects. It's either do them or we're going to be in serious trouble with DEQ.
And I, I know that you don't want to run afoul of DEQ. I understand the, the philosophy there. Would you, could you sum it up by saying that our systems are not in as good a repair as those in Monmouth or Dallas? They're in need of more work?
We, we really don't know the answer to that. We don't, we haven't done the comparative analysis of those two particular communities. We look at, we look at the range from the perspective of what we need to break even. We don't make a profit, so our costs are different than Dallas' costs, they're different than Monmouth's costs, our systems are different, our water rates are different, there's a whole, you know, litany of things that differentiate ours from any other community in the state.
And when you talk about...
If we have to look at it and say, was it taken break even? And that's how we, that's how we set our rate specification.
Okay. And when you talk, thank you. When you talk about capital projects, you're talking about those that are directly related to water and sewer improvement, not other capital projects around the community.
Other, okay.
And I, and I found the water rate study very easily online and in the event this question comes up again since the, and frankly, the writing is too small to look at it right now, maybe we could pinpoint areas in that report that speak to that difference between cities?
Yes.
Additional questions for, for staff to see? I have a question about the stormwater utility in the, for the printed version.
Yes.
You've got the, you've got the two figures, the $1.42 and then the $10.08, but then the monthly base fees crossed out and the per ERU monthly is crossed out? Are those supposed to be crossed out or not?
No, that's just, no, those, those aren't, those were the old rates, that's why they're crossed out.
But that's old writing. Like you're striking that language.
That was, that was incorrect.
Okay, thank you.
That's the monthly base rate.
Because then I wasn't sure what it means. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Sorry? My fault.
Additional questions for staff? Okay. This is an action item.
I move to adopt resolution number 17-269, amending the fee schedule as presented.
Second? A motion to second. Is there further discussion? Is everybody okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on our ping is we have a public hearing on related to RDU. Commissioner Heaton, I think it's you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I have a memorandum related to an application for greater privilege for the RDU. We made an application to increase the liquor license capability to allow them to serve spirits in addition to nothing in terms of serving. I conducted a quick background check and check of our records and we have no high first contacts with them. I have no concerns about their ability to continue in that same direction.
Questions for staff? Does this require additional fees to be paid to the city or is this just, just changing the status of their application or their license?
I believe it does require additional fees to OCC. I don't know if it requires additional fees to us as well.
Yeah, yes, the great, the greater privilege, I think there was an application fee for that.
And I think it was already paid.
I believe so.
Okay. Is there no questions for staff? This is also, there's a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak related to this? I see no one rushing to the microphone. Okay, close the public hearing. This is an action item.
I move to recommend approval of the above liquor license request.
Second? Second. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Heaton, you get to do it again?
Yes, sir. So the next one is going to be related to renewal of a record license, record dismantling license for GMR auto records. The, in that memo, I stated that I didn't have any concerns based on any of our activities that we've seen there. We've never had any issues with them related to access to the location. They've always been very forthcoming with information along with access to it. I did, in reviewing some of these, think that they could be in violation of a couple of instances related to airbags and the destruction of those airbags or the removal of those airbags. And I'm still working on that a little bit. I have gotten the answer from the Oregon State Police. You may find it hard to believe that the DMV, although they issued these licenses, really had no knowledge of the requirements of the license and the definitions related to it. So I've been working with the state police and trying to determine where we're at. When I read the revised statutes related to some definitions on when airbags are required to be removed, I read it as a record for dismantling and the definitions of those are very clear. But in everything that I've found and how they've been, the Oregon State Police has been like investigating these, they're only using the dismantling portion of that and they've just said, well, they only need to take them out when they start to dismantle the vehicles. I don't know. I haven't, I haven't really looked into it much further than that. There are some issues related to the storage of airbags once they're removed and I believe that they, they are going to need to make some changes related to that, but they've been very willing to do whatever I've requested of them to do in order to make sure that they stay in compliance. And I kind of feel for them a little bit because of how difficult it's been for me to find answers from the regulatory authorities, that they've been receiving misinformation regarding other instances that I had to correct for them. So they've been very forthcoming with allowing me in there and letting me know that they'll do whatever they need to, to stay in our good places. So I still had recommended that that license be renewed with me continuing to work with them.
And they have, do they have two locations?
Yeah, they, they're actually a pretty large company. They actually own probably closer to six locations.
Two, two local.
Yeah, but they're owned on different, they're different corporations. It's, it's kind of an odd circumstance, but yes, they do. They own Pick-A-Part, which is on Monmouth Street, and then they own GMR Auto Records, which is on Heather 50th.
Okay. Maybe you ought to make your information that you're finding available for sale to the DMV.
We'll see. We'll see.
So to just clear, so you see no reason, because, because of your working relationship, you see no reason to deny a license and you're confident this is due before the study process?
Correct. I do, because if they don't come into compliance, they can be issued citation related to that and that would be more of a punitive process to be right through.
No reason.
Not related to their actual license.
But there's no reason to believe it's going to be broken.
I don't believe so, no. They, I mean, even if they are currently in violation, I've told them, I'm not looking to issue them tickets, I'm just looking to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we're all compliant.
Great. Questions from council?
I have a question.
Please do.
What? I'm not sure. I'm following where on our fee schedule that we just, is it saying that you need to go and inspect this AM3 years? Is it on there?
It's actually in ORS.
It's what?
In the revised statutes, the Oregon revised statutes in the Oregon Administrative Record, they, those are the ones that, that have the requirement that they be, if they're located within a city, they have to be...
Like a regular...
Approved, yeah. They have to be, they have to seek approval from the city itself in order to apply for that license. And the only real way for us to do that is for me to go out and take a look at it and make sure that everyone shows us to do it.
So it would be a, kind of a business would that be? I'm just trying to see how we, how we structured our cost on taking a day out of his time or however much it was.
I, I've only spent, I think I was there for like 90 minutes or so, went through and pulled a bunch of VIN numbers off the cars and made them go in their computer and show me where everything's at and walked through. They've given me pretty much unlimited access, I could just walk in and walk around there. So it hasn't taken a lot of my time, but I appreciate you looking out for me.
Hey, I'm just trying to get all the money I can or something. That's fine.
Additional questions for the staff member? If not, this is an action item.
I move to approve the renewal of the license for GMR auto records.
Second? I have a motion, second. Discussion? Thank you, everybody's okay?
Good company.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. I get to read the executive session information. The council will now meet the executive session for the purposes of negotiating a real property transaction pursuant to ORS 1926602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session this time. The council will adjourn to the conference terms of the duration of the executive session once the executive session is adjourned or returned to open session in the council chambers and decisions from the executive session will be deliberated at this time. Let's take, let's, I was planning to meet in the conference room within five minutes so if anybody needs to make a quick stop, we'll do that. Okay? We'll come back. Thank you. We're back in session. We're back in session, glad everybody's here. I think we have an action item. If someone will make the motion.
I would be happy to. I move to adjust the purchase price on the development agreement with the Yongs to $176,840.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? This is a good move all the way along. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Any announcements before we go home for dinner?
Well, you have one about piece of property that's sold downtown? Were you going to share them?
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Irvine, is that, Mr. Irvine, does he want to share?
Sure. The dealer, the sharing dealership, oh, my buddy, used, sold to, was in here, was pretty working on fixing up the, fixing up the road for turning into an event space.
Great. Do you have a time table, like, when, or?
You'll have to wait after.
It's the army. I won't hold you.
In the future, okay.
Is there anything else that we need to...
There's one other short announcement.
Here we go.
It is quickly approaching the time when you can make your true love known to one and all by buying a heart on the Independence Walk of Hearts. And the, if you go on the Independence Downtown Association Facebook, you can even order that notice of love online.
Thank you. Anything else? See, you folks, somebody wanted to say adjourn?
Adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a pleasant evening. I'm hungry.